Solving conflict and pursuing equality. As our demographic continues to change, some cities struggled this year as conflict grew into profane, abusive, and hateful speeches at the public commons period of council meetings, or public demonstrations, or even riots, where civility was often the first victim. O.C. Human Relations and Partnership with Chairman of the Board of Supervisors and Associations of the city conducted a forum and developed these practical guidelines for managing civility in public forums. Our partnership with the cities maintained the capacity to serve as an asset in healing these and these times times and saved city tax dollars in the process. We build community by fostering respect, resolving conflict, and pursuing equality. Many of our services are co-canyon-wide, but I would like to share the following data about our additional service last year in Seal Beach. We mediated forty-seven cases, as well as four family mediations in the community and courts where one of the parties was a resident of Seal Beach. In collaboration with Seal Beach Police on our hate crime and individuals, community groups, and hate crime incidents that are not crimes, we documented one hate crime incident in Seal Beach in 2012. We helped build a sense of community with Seal Beach residents and staff through the hate crime victim support. In conclusion, as we begin the 21st year of O.C. Human Relations partnership with O.C. cities, it is notable to recognize that in addition to this specific service we provided Seal Beach this year, we also work to maintain the capacity of O.C. Human Relations to assist when the human relation crisis hits. This year, our capacity here was critical to being able to help residents understand what African-Americans seek and Muslim faith and enable us on a daily basis through listening Cities to rebuild police-immigrant community relations in the aftermath of sometimes violent confrontations. Orange County cities collaborate to address the need for permanent supportive housing for mentally ill and multiple service, homeless shelters to reduce the number of people living on the streets. City councils to maintain civility in public meetings while balancing the free speech rights of individuals with a desire to keep a hate-free zone for the diverse members of the public. While cities may not have major conflicts every year, when the crisis hits, it can be enormously expensive to address in public safety, human suffering, and reputation costs. Significant savings can be achieved if you have a strong human relations organizations with significant capacity. Thank you.
All right, and please note that we have received the annual report. All right, moving on, at this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone, state your name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. Joyce, you're there, ready to go.
Joyce Lassparquet, Old Town Seal Beach. At the last meeting, Mayor Deaton reminded me, or came up and corrected me, that CalPERS and the healthcare and the teachers fund, that we all pay into it. So the city pays into CalPERS. So I added them all up, and it's a combination of $231 billion. $231 billion. Pensions, pensions, healthcare. So how much of that does the city owe? I mean, we bonded some money. Are we paying it now, or are we going to bond more money? And we bonded the money, we gave them the money, and they went and made some bad investments. Who do they come back to? They come back to me, the taxpayer.
I think what we're going to do, Joyce, because I know you bring this up to us every time, and I believe very shortly we're going to have a mid-year budget review, and we're going to address those questions for you, okay?
I still got another minute.
Oh, of course. And what do you think, Jill? When will that be, so she knows?
February 24th.
Okay.
Well, I mean, we don't, we don't, just, we owe California $231 billion, we owe the federal government, what, $6 trillion? $6 trillion? Ah, we're going to go bankroll.
So, okay, go ahead.
Anyway, okay. So, good, but we're not going to talk about how we got into this toll, are we? We're not going to talk about it, how we're paying? Are you going to talk about how it's being paid? So, anyway, we were talking about the city clerk. I have to say, Joanne Yeo was a good city clerk. She typed every word you said down here. Every word. Every word that the city council people, every word that the people came up. And guess what? I have it in my garage. And I'm going to start looking over some of the problems that arose in previous city councils, because someone came down here, Dr. Goldberg doesn't come anymore, because she came down here and corrected him, because he reads every document. He reads every document, and she doesn't want that. But I want transparency in government, not only here, but in Sacramento and the federal level. We want transparency in government. We voted for it. We voted for it. You have a right to tell us. You don't want to tell us? Then the city clerk will have it on record, so that we can bring it out. And I'm going to bring it out of my garage, because that previous city council person should not have told him not to read the documents, because I'm going back and reading her documents. And let me tell you, she's fine for those pensions. She said some bad things about Old Town, and I'm going to bring them up, because we have a right, have transparency in government. And if he wants to come down here and speak, he has a right. And if I want to come down and bring up those old documents, I have a right to do that as well. So, now we're going to get back to pensions, and I wanted to say that Joanne Yeo was very good about that. And we did have, like, a closed session, not a closed session, a five o'clock meeting about third terms, which I guess we're not going to have a councilman at large to vote on, and I guess we're not going to be able to vote on if we leave an attorney that we want here, or one that the city manager and you people want here. But anyway, my documents are in the garage, and they're coming out. Thank you.
Good evening, council staff, the public, a pleasure to be before you, Seth Eker, Seal Beach Chamber of Commerce. I feel like sometimes I'm in Groundhog Day. I just change outfits every time. You guys don't have that luxury. It seems you just keep doing all your business. So thank you for your service. I wanted to address several items on the agenda tonight, most of which, I believe all of which are on the consent calendar. I'll start off with item D, to amend Seal Beach Municipal Code Ordinance 1636. Delighted to see that. Thank you, staff, for continuing to bring that forward. Thank you, council, for your wise thought on that. The Seal Beach Chamber of Commerce supports that ordinance and waiving of second reading. Then I'd like to address item H, the Westminster Avenue Bicycle Land and Resourcing Project. As an avid cyclist myself, and as someone who consistently comes up here and says, yes, let's find grant money, let's find grant money, let's find grant money, it's great that we found grant money, it's great that we're going to do this, and it's great for bicycles, because if more people rode bicycles, I think we would have fewer parking problems, empty garages, and ride more bicycles. At least, that's my strategy. The Chamber of Commerce also wanted to acknowledge, and I'll speak on behalf of Runseal Beach and Lions as well, that the nonprofit participation program, I'm not quite sure, Tim, am I getting that name correctly, that council has agendized and is a process for organizations to participate in fee waivers and those other type things, so that the city can partner with nonprofits, sure is terrific. That's a great process. It seems that it's real clear, there's some structure to it, and it makes it feel, as Joyce was just kind of talking about, a little bit more transparent, like, we've got a process, we've got some structure, and that makes sense. So thank you all for that and that implementation. And my last comment really is a little bit of a question. I just wanted to confirm that the Building Division Fee Study Report that we're going to be hearing tonight will indeed be an agendized public hearing once they actually bring forth that fee schedule. Okay, great. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Now for something completely different. My name is Daniel McGowan, and I am a resident of Seal Beach. I am also the president of the Ancient Aura of Hibernians for the State of California. The AOH is an Irish Catholic fraternal organization representing millions of Irish-Americans, and its tenants with me are some of my Hibernian brothers. Tonight, I have come to seek your support for United Ireland Proclamation to be issued by this council. This resolution is part of a peaceful and democratic effort to build the moral force and political will necessary for the Irish and British governments to call for a national referendum on the future sovereignty of Northern Ireland, as provided for in the Good Friday Agreement of 1998. The United States has always supported a free Ireland, and will continue to do so until Ireland is, in fact, a nation once again. Now, you may be thinking, what does this topic have to do with a local governing body such as this? To answer this question, I refer you to Alexis de Tocqueville, the famous French political faker and historian known for democracy in America. One of the absolute beliefs that his writings remind us of even today is the fact that local government is a fundamental and important key to American democracy. In fact, it is where it all begins. You may also be wondering, how does it affect the people in America and Ireland? The best and perhaps most effective way for me to convey my message would be to tell you about being Irish. I am a second-generation Irish-American. My paternal grandfather was raised in Belfast for a short while, until the time came when it was too dangerous to live in that combative and politically charged city. While he and my great-grandparents were able to eventually escape to Liverpool, countless others never realized that opportunity and were doomed to lives filled with discrimination, despair, and utter hopelessness. During my travels to Northern Ireland, I have seen much progress. However, the full implementation of the Good Friday Agreement still has not been realized. Although on a small scale, this council's issuance of United Ireland Proclamation would truly add to the support of not only the Irish in Ireland, but the proud Irish diaspora in America, some even living in Seal Beach. It would also lend credence to the support of saying, every little bit counts. In conclusion, our support throughout history for the Irish has been repaid to America in ways that can't really be quantified. They have distinguished themselves throughout all aspects of American life, from being among George Washington's most trusted generals, to being an integral part of the building of the railroads, all the way to generations of law enforcement and firemen. One could say the Irish are the fabric of America. As such, I respectfully request further discussion of this proclamation to be placed on the agenda for the next council meeting. It should be noted, the city of Long Beach passed a similar proclamation last March, and my hope is that Seal Beach will be the very first city in Orange County to follow suit. I thank you for your time and attention to my request, and have a good evening.
All right, seeing none, I'm going to close oral communications and ask the city attorney if you have a report for us this evening.
No report tonight.
City manager?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I have two items tonight. Just a reminder for the public that, as we've advertised, for volunteer positions on the Centennial Committee, this Friday, February 14th, is the deadline to contact Patrick Gallegos in my office at 562-431-2527, extension 1308, or via email, to get your name in there, so that we can start setting up meetings and moving forward. Secondly, also another reminder that our nonprofit grant contribution requests, per our policy, are due to the city no later than next Tuesday, February 18th. So that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilman Shanks. Councilman Levitt. Councilman Sloan.
Just briefly, we've been having tree trimming come out in College Park West. Normally, when this happens, I get complaints, people coming to my house complaining, I don't know, the tree's too tall, the tree's too small, too thick, too thin. Unbelievable. I've had people come and talk to me and say, what a great job these tree trimmers are doing. They're polite, professional, and I was somewhat stunned, but I was happy to accept their accolade. And so, anyway, I just think the staff should be aware of that when they're dealing with this contractor.
All right. Councilman Miller. Okay, with that, then, we are going to move along. We have approved the agenda. Now let's vote on the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion, with the exception of items previously removed by the council, which tonight were none. Do I have a motion?
Move approval of the consent calendar. Second?
Please vote.
Before we have a vote, there's two ordinances on your consent calendar. I'll read the titles. Ordinance number 1637, an ordinance of the city of Seal Beach repealing ordinance 1615 and deleting chapter 7.70 of the Seal Beach Municipal Code Regarding Safety Zones. The second one is ordinance number 1636, an ordinance of the city of Seal Beach adding chapter 5.75 of the Seal Beach Municipal Code Regarding Smoke Shops, Electronic Smoking Devices, and Drug Penfamiliaria.
Okay, please vote. And that's 5-0 to accept the consent calendar.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I might for just a second, I didn't pull item H, because I did not want to interfere with the voting, but I just wanted to mention for the public that many times Seth and other people say, we're going to do Westminster Avenue because we need a bike lane, or we're going to do another area, we're going to pave it because it's full of potholes. Why isn't the city doing it fast enough? I just want to point out occasionally, the city's best interests are the same as yours, that we want to do something and keep it that way, but there are other agencies involved. And it isn't always a city that either is at fault or gets all the credit. We're wanting to do Westminster Avenue and put in the bike lanes, and we want to start that as soon as we can, because it's a grant that we're going to need to finish that project. Well, I sit on the Orange County Sanitation Board, and at the last meeting, we were told that they're going to replace all the sewer lines down Westminster Avenue. And they're going to start as soon as they can, but not as soon as we are. Now, there's such a thing as a moratorium that prevents another agency from tearing up what another agency has done for five years. So if we put in brand-new pavement, brand-new bicycle lane in 2014-15, sanitation needs to change those pipes out in 2017. So I have no idea where we're going with this, but either you're going to see a beautifully paved main road, or you're going to be dodging all the barricades and potholes, because I really don't know how we're going to work this one out. And hopefully, somewhere down the line, a manager of sanitation and our city manager can get together and work out something.
I just want to point out, for those that were here for the extending the terms, there's Councilman Levitt, who, because of his experience, knew that was an issue and jumped right on it. The new council person won't do that. Thank you.
Yes, he's right.
All right, and I do know that our staff is working very diligently on that, and we are aware of the problem, and hopefully, the agencies will work together, because it'll save sanitation a lot of money if they do it at the same time we do ours. So hopefully, that'll get all worked out, and everything will be wonderful. All right, moving on then to unfinished, continued business, Building Division Fee Study Report. We are going to review the report, and is there a staff report to go along with?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Tonight, we have with us our building official, John Trau. If you recall, he was before you back in November to present this item, and he's back, as noticed and recognized in your staff report, he's done a complete analysis and is here. We've given him a time limit, so we're hoping he can stay within that. I know he's decreased his presentation from 50, that's 5-0 minutes, down to, I think, 18. Is that what we're down to, John?
18?
Yeah.
Approximately 18. I'm hopeful. I'm a very optimistic person.
So, John, you got it. You have to talk really fast. So he's going to present to you, and then we'd be looking for staff direction to come back to you potentially with a public hearing item to discuss a fee resolution. So with that, John, you're on. The time's ticking.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff, and attendees. I'm advancing the recommendations resulting from the fee study and coordination with staff. Quick review of the topics I'm going to cover tonight, the goal of the fee study, scope of the study, fee determination methodology, actual presentation of data and recommendations, and of course, probably the most important, is question and comments at the end.
Oh, that's the 18 minutes.
Pardon?
Is that the 18 minutes? The questions and comments? I know, it's confusing him. I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
Firstly, the goal of the fee study, of course, was to evaluate Seal Beach Building Division fees as compared with surrounding or nearby similar jurisdictions. The actual fee study encompassed nine jurisdictions, eight cities, and LA County covered building and plan review fees and other available data. Common approaches, I covered this last time, fees based on construction valuation, and then, of course, in what you might call the trade area, it deals with the fixtures themselves. The purpose of the fees generally is to, the underlying principle is, fees offset the cost of the service. This was the methodology. You establish evaluation, calculate a fee for both the building and the plan review, and ultimately, add in other fees, and come up with a total charge. As I indicated, for the trades, it's based on individual item count, so like number of electrical outlets, number of toilets, HVAC units, et cetera. Getting immediately into the first particular item is, we have what's called a building permit issuance fee, that's to handle administrative costs. You see presented here the accumulation of the data. Seal Beach is sitting at 70. When I compare it to the average of the nine jurisdictions, it's 3618. We're actually recommending a reduction from $70 to $40 for the permit issuance fee. For some reason... It's not advancing.
I'm 18 minutes.
There goes the 18 minutes, huh? Can't get it, then.
The battery dead, maybe?
The return on the computer won't? Moving right along, without the presentation material, the next issue dealt with electrical, mechanical, and plumbing, a permit issuance fee. This, again, is an administrative fee. Plotting out the various jurisdictions, the high point is Long Beach, somewhere over $100 for a permit issuance fee. The average was 42. If you take Long Beach out of the average, it comes down to somewhere around about $33, a little over $33. Our current charge is 34, so we're not actually making any recommendation for change in that regard. The next item is dealing with the actual valuation determination, and to put it more succinctly, we've been using a valuation chart that's oversimplified, and as a result, business, for example, is a general category. Mercantile is a general category, when in fact, if you're looking at construction valuation, you compare a real estate office with a medical office, or a Home Depot with a Kohl's. Different construction valuations, so the end result is, we're recommending a slight change to encompass an additional valuation table distinction that breaks it down a little further, so we're hitting closer to the mark as to what the actual construction valuation would be upon which we're basing the permit. The actual recommendation is just to add an additional source. LA County has seen fit to recognize this flaw in the overgeneralizing, so we're proposing to be able to use the LA County valuation determination table, which gives you better breakdown. Pardon?
Page 7.
Um...
Thank you. It's page 7 on...
Is it? What is it?
It's page 7.
I got a different, I got a different set. Oh. 7.
8-7?
8-7. That's the actual recommendation. The only real key is to add in the ability to use, or the county of Los Angeles schedule. Turning to the, directly to the permit fee part, as I indicated, there's really three parts, the building permit, the plan review, and then other fees. I did a breakdown, and you have charts for the building permit fee comparisons for $1,000 to $10,000, and what you find there is that the city of Seal Beach is not necessarily the highest, but in the upper range, especially in the $1,000, $2,000, $3,000 range. I also plotted for you the $20,000 to $100,000 range, where Seal Beach comes very much into a competitive low side as compared to the other jurisdictions. And when you get to the $500,000 or a million-dollar valuation, we're the next to the lowest in the plot. With the exception, in summary, with the exception of the construction valuation at $10,000 or less, Seal Beach permits are at or below the majority of the jurisdictions surveyed. And I would delay discussion on the $10,000 and less until a later date, because I have a point that I can make. And I think we're catching up. Keep going. That's the, that's the chart of the $1,000 to $10,000, and you can see Seal Beach is on the high side, if you will, by comparison. If we go to the $20,000 to $100,000, we're coming more in the line, Seal Beach being the extreme left in the plots as compared to the others. Cypress seems to be the cheapest of anybody. Here's a comparison of the higher dollar valuation, the $500,000 and million, where we're certainly in the low end. And as I indicated, with the exception of the $10,000 or less, we're below a majority of the jurisdictions, and I'll talk a little bit more about that $10,000. The plan review fee is the second component, and you see a similar thing occurring in the lower valuation range, the $10,000 and less. The $20,000 to $100,000 valuation range, we're on the low side throughout in terms of plan review. And the interesting thing is that we have some benefits that derive, because at the current time, we're not sending any plan reviews out. We're doing all of those in-house. In fact, I'm the one that's doing all of those in-house, because I have the qualifications to do those, as well as the geotechnical surveys. Similar thing in the plan review. We spent a lot of time, same statement essentially, but in the plan review area, we're pretty much... but in the plan review area, we're pretty much within the average except for the three thousand or less, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later. Here's the total, which means I'm adding the building permit and plan review because you really need to take a look at, because we were high on one side, a little lower on the other, so the total in terms of impact, in the lower ten thousand, we're still in the high range, especially the small values. The next one, similar to the other plots, and finally, the large dollar value, we're essentially one of the lowest, if not the lowest. In summary, of the nine jurisdictions surveyed for the total building and plan review fees, at the two thousand dollar valuation level, we're one of the top four. At the three thousand, we're the same or less than four of the cities, and as you see, the reflection for the five thousand and ten thousand dollar, at ten thousand, we're the same or less than seven of the nine. In terms of the miscellaneous trade permit fees, these are the fees that are charged for such things as electrical rewiring, an electrical panel changeout. We have comparable fees, so no changes recommended in that regard. Now let's move into, quickly into other fees, and there's three types that we looked at. One was the general plan update fee, second was the archival fee, which means the fee we use to archive records, and then finally, the construction waste recycling fee and For the general plan update fee, our currents, the majority of the jurisdictions set the fee at point two percent of the building permit fee. The general plan update fee for Seal Beach is currently set at two percent of the construction valuation. This is a, this is a significant cost, as you will see. Our recommendation is actually to reduce the general plan update fee from two percent to the point two percent to be consistent with the other jurisdictions, and in fact, we're further recommending that the general plan update fee be based on the building permit fee rather than a construction valuation, which will bring us in to sync with majority of the jurisdictions. Moving to the archival fee, the archival fee charged by others who have such a fee because some don't as yet, and they vary from three and a half to six percent of the building permit fee. The archival fee for Seal Beach is point oh oh two, which is interpreted to be point a tenth of, or two tenths of a percent of the construction valuation. But remember, you're talking construction valuation, it might be set at two thousand and a permit fee that may be at a hundred, so when you're applying these percentages, it can be a significant difference. Recommendation is to retain the archival fee at the current listing in the fee schedule, but change from the construction valuation to the building permit fee basis. Finally, moving into the construction waste recycling fee, the, we actually have a level of inconsistency between the fee schedule and the scope of coverage in the municipal code in section nine six five, where the scope of coverage in the municipal code doesn't come into play for a fee if the project is less than a thousand square feet. This came to light relatively recent to me when a re-roofer came in and said, "I got to put five hundred and forty dollars down, and I'm just repairing a small part of a roof." So what we're recommending, and I believe it's consistent with the actual municipal code, is to revise the fee schedule by inserting the limits of the covered projects, that is, the thousand or square feet or more, and it only applies to that. So if you have a small re-roofing project, you don't have to put down the five hundred dollar deposit and pay the forty dollar fee. So it makes, in my opinion, makes sense and is consistent with the municipal code. We talked last time when I presented at the works session, talk about flat fee provisions. I'm actually recommending building permits for the following items be issued based on a flat fee of twenty-five dollars, if the permits obtained by a state licensed contractor licensed to do that type of work. And there's three areas that I covered, water heater replacements, when they're replacing the same location. There's some important features, the pressure and temperature relief valve and the anchorage of the tank, but I'm confident that we can put a program in place, retrofit windows and what's referred to as solar tube type installations. So I'm recommending a flat fee be placed for those. Finally, if I sum all of the fee recommendation reductions into play, I wanted you to see what happens in the thousand and ten thousand dollar, that construction valuation range. The lower line is where the proposed fees would set. Our current fees are set at the upper. There's approximately about a third difference in the, in the fee structure, but it brings them down both in the line with other jurisdictions in terms of the overall, overall fees. Summary, six changes, reduce the permit issuance fee, change the calculation for the general plan update and archival fee, revise the construction waste recycling scope, so no fee less than thousand square feet, look at updating and the valuation table and a flat fee items. I don't know whether I made the time limit, if I didn't, I apologize.
I don't either, John, but it was a great report, thank you. Any questions of the, from the council, yes?
Yeah, what is the deposit five hundred dollars for on the re-roofing?
It's essentially used to, if they have to do cleanup, it's refundable. Once they, they do the, bring in the forms that say they've recycled and they've taken the construction material and properly recycled it, so that's a refunded fee, the five hundred is basically a deposit.
Well, they have to dispose of all the loose wood and the framing and everything else.
Correct.
And they receive a certificate from the recycling area?
They receive a certificate, bring it back, and they refund the deposit.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a couple.
Yeah?
Have you considered, like, the overhead of City Hall or the travel time to houses and back and in your estimates, time and motion study or something like that? I mean, you have a flat rate of twenty, twenty-five dollars for a water heater, I had my water heater done, and I, first of all, I don't know if I heard you correctly, but the person had to have a city license, all that other, they had to have a city license to do the water heater, the plumber.
Yeah, the, the, there's two fundamental approaches that are, that are used. One's a time-motion type study. The other is, is to take a look at fiscal years over a number of years, not just one fiscal year, because you could actually connect, collect revenues in one fiscal year toward the end and expand an expense in the next fiscal year for the inspections and so forth. Part of that analysis should in fact include and account for overhead. It should account for some time from my director, city manager, council, et cetera. And remember, I said the whole main goal is to try to offset the cost of providing the service. So if you look, and there's, there's good basis, and in fact, legal basis with some of the challenges, the Corona case laid it out pretty clearly, where they stated, you can look at your revenue versus cost over more than a fiscal year and try to achieve a balance, making sure you account for such things as council time, facilities, management, et cetera, et cetera. So that is actually a recommendation, a long-term recommendation is contained in the fee study. It's not an item I touched on tonight, but it's a long-term recommendation to the city that they take a look at this. And then you, then you look at adjusting fees accordingly as you see where you fall, rather than saying, "Well, we got to overrun this year, so we'll, we'll cut this year." Because we, you invest a lot in staff, you invest a lot in training, and so you try not to knee-jerk. You try to look at what we can get overall.
I guess, I was thinking that, having had my house redone last year too, everybody that worked on it had a city license. I don't know if you answered that, because I asked you if you had to have a city license to do a water heater, I don't think you did, but everybody that worked on my house had to have a city license, or the contractor did for sure. So, I just wondered if you're, if you're going to require a city license, because I had to pay more for my water heater, like, two hundred dollars more because I had to go find somebody to do a city, had a city license, so, you know, flat fee. The other one I was going to ask you about, on the recommendation on page seven, you say the International Code Council or the county of LA?
Right.
Los Angeles? Why an or? It's got to be one or the other, right? Are you going to decide later?
The, the International Code Council publishes it on the basis of this general categorization that I indicated, like, businesses lump together and mercantile is lumped together. They do that because it conforms to what the code has. It's not very helpful for a local jurisdiction who traditionally, the legacy organizations that preceded ICC published what the LA County now uses, which you'll have a retail sales and it'll be a market, retail sales and a clothing store, so that you're not overcharging or undercharging. So my recommendation is to allow the flexibility to utilize the LA County chart, but keeping an eye on the ICC chart to make sure LA County chart has a parity with the ICC and the categories where you can create a parity.
The last question, I noticed that you compared us to other cities, but every city's different. I mean, we don't have a lot to expand in our city, whereas if you were in the city of Burbank right now, they're going to add nine thousand five hundred homes. Though I know there's some of your comparisons here, but, I mean, you just have, it's hard to find a comparison, I think, isn't it? Maybe Los Alamos, but they may have about as much open space, but they're a smaller city.
Well, the, the interesting thing is that, I think Cypress, Los Alamos, Hermosa Beach, those are somewhat similar. I can tell you that, that I have the benefit of, I did a survey for another jurisdiction, and I surveyed nineteen jurisdictions, inland jurisdictions, some of which are very similar from a standpoint of demographics, other than the nicety of the beach and so forth. And I don't see a lot of differences. We hit on the major ones, the permit issuance fee, the general plan update fee, the archival fee are the ones that, and the flat fee. The flat fee one is extremely important, but when, when you start looking at how much it costs to do projects these days, what kind of construction project can you do for two thousand dollars or three thousand dollars? How much your bathroom costs here, Jim?
Well, I, I'll conclude, I just think if you, that comparing the cities makes sure we're the same or similar, as well as when you talk about whether you're going to have a, have to have a city license, because we make significant money from city licenses and so, so, and I don't think you're thinking about that necessarily. Thank you, I'm done.
I just have one question for you, John. As we, as we compare ourselves with other cities, I think it's great that we lower fees, and I am really happy about especially the most commonly replaced things for homeowners, but I want to be sure that those fees are covering our cost of doing business. For instance, the inspection, what it costs to send an inspector out. So I think that Councilman Miller kind of covered that too. So are we covering the cost, for instance, if we do a twenty-five dollar flat fee?
Well, let me, let me maybe, maybe help you in some regard. There's no change recommended for the permit or plan review fee. So I believe we're able to cover our cost there. The permit issuance fee that's recommended to be reduced, I checked with our permit technician to find out how much time she was spending, and then I took a fully burdened rate for her and figured...
Okay, good.
We're pretty, we're pretty close.
Okay.
Now, when we start looking at, at the general plan update fee and the archival fee, those may be items we have to revisit, and I think we, we talked about that, doing that when we do the budget analysis for the upcoming year. And, but as you can imagine, we've been collecting two percent on the general plan update fee for eight months, approximately, and that was based on a construction valuation. Lowering it significantly in this, which is the major one, I don't think over the next period of time before we get into the budget talks, is going to be overwhelming to us from a, from a budget hit, that's my impression, because we, we collected this and we're able to, to carry through.
Okay, because I know we did a complete fee analysis last year and what it costs different people to do what jobs, and I just want to be sure that we're being consistent with that. Also, I don't know if people are aware that we have moved a lot of our building services into in-house. I think this is one of the benefits, what you've provided for us, is showing us a way to lower the fees for our residents, I think that's really great. I was wondering, what else have you noticed besides the fact you can plan check in-house? What else have you noticed that has come out of moving our building services back in-house rather than contracting out?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to speak to the, to the bringing of the counter technician, the building inspector and the code enforcement officer in-house. I think they've brought a dedication to service to the citizens and a care, a caring. I think we were fortunate in the people we hired, I believe they were excellent. We got Brian, the inspector, came from Hermosa Beach, thirteen years as an inspector, the top inspector. The building official there called me and kind of chewed me out for, for hiring Brian. Leslie, our, our counter technician, came from Southgate, top person there, and she's super. Our code enforcement officer, Will Chin, he actually jumped ship from the contractor to, to come to Seal Beach, and we're quite happy about that. As far as myself, I'm somewhat unique, I'm not going to go through a resume, quick pieces over forty years in construction regulation, both sides of the counter, I'm a licensed civil and fire protection engineer. I have the capability to review the, do all the plan reviews, all the geotechnical and soil report reviews that in the past have been sent out.
And that should significantly reduce the time that it takes for people to get plans back?
And Madam, let me just add, because John's being modest, one of the reasons why it took me some time to try to reevaluate the building department is because we wanted to look at methods and ways to save cost, and bringing John on as the building official, we save cost in that he does the in-house plan checking. So in, historically, we've been sending out the plan checks and the review of geotechnical engineering reports to a contractual company, and they've been charging or collecting the revenue off of our fees. Bringing it in-house, just through our estimated evaluation, we've, we've saved probably over sixty thousand dollars already. Just having John with his unique capabilities of being a civil engineer and his, his, his skills, he can plan check. And so, just for example, geotechnical reports for, if a citizen came in and needed to submit a geotechnical report because they're building a home, a two-story home, that also would have to be sub out. So not only are we looking at timeframes that are equivalent to two, two, um, two weeks... So not only are we looking at timeframes and our equivalent to, to, um, two weeks or even longer for an outside plan checker to review those things, John does it in-house, so not only are we saving a convenience, um, to the resident or to an applicant who's coming into the city, but we're showing the efficiency method of how, in Seal Beach, we can provide that type of full service even when John is part-time. So, um, I think what's critical is we're evaluating the uniqueness of the staff and their abilities to cross-train, um, but at the same time, um, look at methods and ways of saving costs. So that's why we think the fees that we're introducing that we think can be set as flat fees are typically the, the type of inspection that may only require the inspector maybe two to three minutes to evaluate, because they're very small, very minor. So in that regard, we're, we're offsetting the cost of that inspection because of the other fees that we are showing and demonstrating as an in-house collection, um, because it's a cost-saving, because we're doing a lot of these type of services in-house now. So it's efficiency and it's a matter, I think it's effective, and I think it's working for us. So, um, John's being modest, but he's a great deal of, of support to our department and how we're trying to refine whatever's necessary to save costs to the public.
Well, thank you, I appreciate the fact that you're saving the costs and passing them on to the residents, so. All right, is there anything else that we need to do? Do we need to accept the, receive an file, or we need direction to schedule a public hearing? Okay, um, so directed? All right, I think that this will be the time then to adjourn the city council meeting to Monday, February twenty-fourth, at, uh, five-thirty to meet and close session if deemed necessary. Thank you all for coming, thank you for participating, and we'll see you in a couple weeks.